I think.
Mr. Newbacker, would you like? Your term is almost up. Stand for the clouds. We're at five thirty, guys.
I just say it's. Through the Republic.
Well, come. Jenny David, here, Greg Scott.
Ivan Vaughn.
Brad Newbacker.
It doesn't.
Mark Cerber.
Present.
Commissioners, any additions or corrections to the agenda?
No.
No. Item two, public comment, this is for agenda items only. Is there any public comment in the room? Any public comment on the phone? Item three, appointments, three A, Mr. Blamer, Transit Director, related to van purchase, come on up.
I hope this goes as quick.
Where I'm been.
Well. We are, we got that transit boss. And I don't even know how it happened, I can tell you right now, but um. It's, the cost of the bus is five hundred and fifty-one dollars more than the grant money. The bus was ordered a year ago. When we sat down to order it. I had put one order together to get the grant. And. Did you, did you show him a copy of this, these grant, or this order form?
Make sure.
It's on our.
They're very complicated.
I can see that.
And I goofed up on. These forward-facing deleting and. So when we actually got the grant, I had to. Truly order the bus, order the van. Working with the guy at Coke Struck, and he told me where I had done this screw up, so we had to. To make all things around to. Make it right and. Tell you the truth, I don't even remember, but I don't think we paid any attention to how much we were spending, it was, it was close to it and. We were under a timeline to get it ordered and I take the blame for it, so.
The total of the van is sixty-three thousand seventy-six dollars.
Yeah. And, and the, um. The grant is sixty-two thousand five twenty-five.
So we know where we're gonna turn, you know where you're, how you're gonna pay for it?
Yeah.
He has significant fund balance.
Yes, we do.
We're good. Do you have any questions?
What did you get from balance?
Five hundred dollars difference.
Yeah. It's not a real big deal.
But it shouldn't have happened, you know.
No, it's not like five thousand, but.
Well, we wouldn't even have to make a. Should you write your own law for man then? With that amount of money, you can make that. Spend that money.
Now, how's this van, this van is obviously just, I, I think, I would think you told us this van is. Going to be utilized for.
Well. It was, it was purchased for. Non-emergency medical transportation and also. A van that, that we could use. We don't, we don't even have a vehicle that anybody can go anywhere in, other than our plow truck. You know what I mean? Sending people up to Ross Common, they gotta take their own vehicles. So that was the reason we bought it. And. It, it's actually, it's a pretty nice van. It's gonna be a little hard. Getting the wheelchairs in it because it's from the rear, rear access to it, but it's got two wheelchair positions. Another nice thing about it, um. You don't have to have a P endorsement to drive it. So we could utilize it. Try, running it daily, transporting people in town, it's got a. It's got a, um. Door opener like, like the transit buses themselves, it opens like that versus a sliding door, it's, it's set up pretty nice.
I, well, I see that you have that up, I mean, the vehicle seating chart, you, this is all on iPad.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Good enough, well.
Thank you, Ray.
Item three B, on a roll, on a, Scott Williams. Probate court judge related to position allocation adjustment.
Judge isn't here, and I'm surprised either here, Michael, aren't here, but what they have proposed. Is the finance person in the friend of the court, they want to give or want to assign more responsibility to, and has a lot to do with. The, the reporting they have to do with the state. And in looking at the. Pay grade system that's in the court contract, they would like to move him from an L three to an L four grade. To do this directly nice additional workload. I'm sorry they're not here because they would be in a better position to tell you exactly what those differences are. You might have seen a par form that came through, they originally submitted about two or three weeks ago, and I said, well. We can't just do this one because it's moving the pay grade and the contract says this is an L three. That's it, it's, it's just hard and fast, and so you see the email from the union business agent. Saying they're okay with the union going from the L three to the L four. Yeah, and I wish the judge were here to help explain what those differences are, it was written up in that par form. Pretty thorough narrative that was on there. Uh, I am comfortable with it, but again, I don't, as I put it, I don't carry water for the departments if they're not here and you need more information, then we'll have to postpone conversation.
This isn't the one then that, that you weren't okay with? This is.
No, those were district court, and he actually figured this out too. Uh, but that, that they're independent of this one.
Okay, but they came at the same time.
They did.
Time, correct?
Four or five of them all came at once, yeah.
Questions, Commissioner Cerber?
I'm good.
Mr. Scott?
The other ones in this one are in the same contract, aren't they?
They're in the same union, but they're. For lack of another word, I don't know how the court does it, they're a different department, so this is a friend of the court. The others were in the district court upstairs, the friend of the court person is down here.
Right, and I thought it was this. Same Teamsters contract.
It is.
It is.
So are we setting precedent?
No, because you got the union to say, yes, we agree, there are additional duties, duties, and so we agree to move that up to the L four. And when we get the negotiations in the next contract, this will, L four now will be incorporated into it.
There's additional duties, what was the pay raise?
Ah, gosh, I wanna say it was between fifteen hundred and two thousand difference.
A year.
A year.
At least that. I, I saw the far.
Mr. Newbacker? Are you looking that up, Commissioner Scott?
Yeah, I'm trying to, where I had it.
I guess why? Why now?
I had to do it at the beginning of the fiscal year on October one.
Oh, okay.
Oh, there's the ones for district court.
I think I still do pen. Okay, thank you much. You guys wanna come back to this? Was, do you have it? What, what do you?
No, I was making a reference to there's. Quiet.
Do you guys, would you guys have to come back to this? Can someone give me an answer?
Answer.
Just one sec.
I'm, like I said, I'm good with it, so I'm just trying to find, I'm trying to find for credit.
So I think.
I just got the district court one, sir.
Would you like to come on up, Mr. Gilbert, Sheriff Gilbert, I'm sorry, related to the family shelter agreement?
There's probate number, this one in probate court goes up.
Come on up, guys. Good evening.
Hi.
Hello.
How are you?
Well, while he's looking for that, I attended the animal shelter board meeting on Tuesday.
Okay.
Uh, confirmed with Charlie Elliott that they do meet the requirements for the insurance that's in the contract. Uh, they were good with, they approved signing the contract with one addition. Which is to add that verbiage under C, which would cover costs for treatment and care. That, that would be invoiced or recorded and sent to the courts for restitution and or judgment and settlement. So basically, we, I didn't even think of it, it was a good point by them, but a lot of the times if we have a case like that, that's in civil or criminal. It is like a care and abuse neglect, so there is some treatment costs that go along with that. Monthly. Fee type of thing, so. Sent it to the attorney. To have that verbiage added, also correction on the type of on the first page. Then Commissioner Cerber just brought to my attention, there's discrepancy with the thirty and ninety day contract severance, so I'll send another email to the attorney tomorrow morning. To have that clarified for thirty day contract of, of either one.
I think they can just delete that one paragraph, the top paragraph on page two, if you're looking at it.
I, I had a question about the cost, so it looks like it's not gonna exceed seventy-five hundred dollars per year for up to fifty dogs. Correct?
So it'd be seventy-five hundred for fifty dogs, if we go over fifty dogs, it would be fifty dollar per dog there. Then there's also the twenty dollar invoices for animals that are approved outside of the fifty that are covered with the seventy-five, so what you'll see is the monthly invoice for breakdown. It's a six, it's a six something.
Six hundred twenty-five dollars.
Yep, so there, there'll be an invoice for the installments, and then there'll also be a second column that'll have any twenty dollar. Intake charges that are authorized by the animal control officer.
We weren't doing this, it, there was a cost in the previous contract, correct? A charge?
Well, the previous version or inclination of it, there was a charge, but they weren't charging. When the management took over, they started invoicing again, which is why we started to see invoices for intakes. So this kind of puts. Puts it all in black and white now, what we're gonna be doing with the shelter and. So it will, it gives us three kennels outside for housing, so like in, even after hours or weekends.
But we, we attempt to get these, these costs back, correct? You know what this, is that what it meant by, uh? Restitution.
Some of the costs, if, I mean, if there is criminal charges or a civil case that's involved, that will go towards, if there's a judgment or, um. Found guilty or responsible for any type. So there could be some costs that come back to us in those circumstances.
So I guess, do we, say a dog is picked up, it, it seeks, it needs, it needs care. Say an owner, um, claims it five days later. Do we attempt, but there was no charges or anything, do we attempt to get? Those costs back?
Differ.
No, we don't.
I, I, I don't know that we do, uh, the shelter has some mechanisms where they, if an owner is identified, that they get money. From them to cover like care and treatment, this is just for the placement, really.
Okay.
The seventy-five hundred, um, the only cost for care is. I guess the cost for care is built into the seventy-five hundred, the, the per dog cost, so your intake, your initial kennel cough and that type of thing. That's all built into that seventy-five. And then the twenty dollars for the additional is just the intake. Um, we wouldn't be charged for anything as far as that, that type of thing in, in those cases.
There's no way around this, correct?
No, and it's very fair.
All right. Questions, comments?
They were.
I think it's extremely fair considering the fact that I remember. Back in the day when we were housing with Aaron Eck. Back in my day, and we were, back then, twenty thousand plus. Paying Aaron Eck. How's our, so I think it's a good deal, personally.
Commissioner Scott?
So, we're only paying for a certain amount of days and then there.
Certain number of dogs.
And days.
Dogs and days.
Days, there's days in there too.
That they hold for.
And then they, they own them. After, after a certain amount of days.
Four days.
Four days, and they, they, they own the dog then.
After four days, the county is no longer financially responsible for the animal, and it may be placed for adoption.
Right. And that's when they. Charge for adoption. To get, recover some of their money.
But if it's brought in by the animal control, the owners are known. Where the owners are known will be held up to seven days, after which the county is no longer financially responsible.
Seven days.
That's in the same paragraph. Right. If the owner is where the owners are now.
If it's not a stray, and they know who the owner is. When it was picked up for, right now, larger or whatever, it's got a tag on it, they can identify the owner of them.
Yeah, this is an annual one, correct?
It will be now.
Yes.
Yes, we just put in the one year, so that.
Do you guys have any questions? I don't see where we have to do this.
Sounds good.
Thanks, guys.
Chance to review it at the one year mark and make sure, so.
Did you have anything, did you find, uh, item B you were looking for, Commissioner Scott? Item four, indigent council agreement.
So this agreement is an annual one, um. Vendors, in this case, just got this back to us, it is exactly the same contract we've seen for the last few years, the exception of the pricing, uh, the cost is up two percent. Otherwise, uh, you can see they've already signed. Which is good, otherwise, um, it very should probably look pretty familiar to you, and this is funded through the Indigent Defense Fund that we get through the state.
I missed the annual contracts, correct?
You're right.
Questions, guys?
It's, it's setting, it's setting, uh. A fifty percent per mile. Outside the county. Miley's expense.
That's a deal. IRS.
I know, I mean, they're not asking for whatever the government said at today.
They asked for.
Okay. Uh, it just doesn't sound like a lawyer.
Good. Okay, item three B, Parks and Recreational Commission structure and authority.
I wanted to, um, just hand this out to the board after the conversation, I forget if it was at the last meeting or the meeting before, about the. Uh, Parks Commission and how it operates, and this, after reading this again over the weekend, it's sort of elevated again on my. Radar in terms of priority, because in the Park and Recreation Plan. It's specifically stated, and I haven't gone back to confirm. Motions or resolutions to new past boards, but stating in here very specifically that, uh, the. Parks and Recreation Commission is operated under PA two sixty-one. Of nineteen sixty-six. So it's very good that that's in the plan, because all that points us to the authority that the board has to establish the Parks and Recreation Commission to begin with. But, uh, some things that maybe we've been a little bit lax on, I, uh, put together, got a couple of ex- excerpts out of the statutes for you, and for whatever reason, mine isn't highlighted. But it not only tells us in the statute. Who we have to appoint to the Parks and Recreation Commission. It also talks about responsibilities strictly, or that are responsibilities of this board, and frankly, the one, uh. Very short excerpt, uh, forty-six, three fifty-four. Tells you that the board in its annual budget may provide for the expenses of the. County commission, in this case, they're talking about the Parks Commission. Which shall be limited in its expenditures to the amounts so appropriated unless further appropriation is being made, in effect, operating like any other department. Now, the discussion was at the meeting about when this was put together, the understanding was. The Parks Commission will be put together, they would be bringing in their own funds, and that the board would leave them alone. You can't leave. You have responsibility, even though the funds generated are, funds generated by those parks, they still become a public asset or a public fund, if you will. And this board is the only authority to determine how those are spent. So this all came back to that question about the fence and processes and policies and procedures. And now the short answer is, you know, definitively, yes, they have to follow the county. Procedures, so when the conversation was they would be left alone, well. We're really not gonna leave them alone, they're, they are gonna have to follow those, those processes, and I don't think there's gonna be any pushback from that. In my meetings with them, they just need to know. Okay, so we'll just make sure that, uh. In the future, as these come forward, that they're following that, and that you will see. Any of these types of contracts for approval. Before they're, uh. Signed. So it won't be the Parks Commission that's, that's signing off on that. Now, why is this important? Well, we're operating under a system right now where the parks have been self-sufficient, they have fund balances, they're doing fine. But if for some reason, we have a off year, say at the RV park, we don't get as many campers in, and they don't meet their budget. Guess what happens? I mean, they can't operate in the deficit either. So that question's gonna come back to this body, and you're gonna have to decide a deficit elimination plan. What that usually means is sometimes general fund monies have to be transferred to cover whatever that obligation might be. Parks Commission can't do that, only this board can do it. So, and again, another reason, just to make sure that they brought into the fold, um, there were some questions, and in fact, I sent you an email, I think. It had been yesterday, I think it was maybe today, uh, there was a question about an RV that was parked, and there were fees that weren't paid. This is why it's very good that the Parks, uh. Mission is operating under your umbrella, because now we can put that question to our county council and got some very good guidance. There was a suggestion, um. About a certain action that they were contemplating, and that was ruled right out from that attorney's opinion, as you can see. Uh, but the attorney also laid out the steps that they have to take, if they do need to take next steps, who they contact, which is the sheriff. And then they proceed under those. Those statutes. So, um, long and the short of it is, I just wanted to follow up with you on this, and it is, again, something that now is gonna be elevated on my radar, I'll make sure. I don't wanna be a Parks Director, but probably sit in on a few of the meetings and just, you know, hey, there's a resource and can monitor. Make sure we do it right.
I found that confusing, I, now my question is, after reading what you put on here was. That, that to me was very broad, I, I guess, was. Could we? Do anything as a board then? For them to go back to, um. Working how they did, is there a resolution or something that we could pass?
You mean to delegate your authority to them?
Correct.
No.
Okay, that was my question.
Answer, no.
Well, it's pretty clear.
Yeah, I gave you a list too of where we are as far as members on that body, and there's, there's one, well. I'm pretty confident the drain commissioner doesn't know that he's a statutory member of this group. And I'm sure the road commission doesn't know they have a seat as well, so those are things that we can follow up on administratively to. First of all, the major, to make sure he knows, and then contact the road commission, uh, to find out, um. Who they might want to sign.
I'm thinking that, I'm thinking, I'm not absolutely sure, but I'm thinking that Scott Bell was an appointee of Mike Damasio to, to set on it.
Can it be an appointee on there, or does it have to be?
He can, it's the drain commissioner, his designees, I remember it. Uh, so he could, I don't know how the drain commissioner operates, if he's formerly. Done something with, with Scott to say, you're, I, I don't know, we'd, we'd wanna follow up on that.
I'm thinking that's what it was.
We did resolution twenty-one sixty-three. Last year, um. We didn't list him that way, so if that's what we're gonna do, we'll wanna correct that, and then we'd have an open seat.
And Brenda asked to be on it after her last term, but then she vacated. Uh, Ellen P was in there. Now.
I don't remember a resolution coming in to appoint her.
No. Well, I don't remember one either, because. We're all thinking we're run on this autonomy, you know?
All right, well, we'll. Figure that out, you'll see a resolution probably at the next meeting.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking back and, like, I don't know. Karen helped me out, eighteen, nineteen, that we, that we came to the commission and saying, you know, we're changing the, the commission gourd and everything, we're. We're moving on faster, because before. I mean, they only met nine times out of the year. Most, the majority of the members were in Florida in the wintertime. That's when it got hit to me, I mean, I just became, I don't think I was through January of my first term. That, that I was confronted with, uh. The park is not paying for itself. And so then, you know, immediately I asked, was there a committee, and, oh, well, they're like in Florida. Well, we gotta talk to them first. And then, then it was, then we talked to some of the members that hadn't even been to, there was a couple of members hadn't even been to a meeting in years. But there was no other people stepping up to taking spots, and nobody backed away. Once it got out above the park. Uh, well, the, the two younger kids that were running the, the nature park up there at the time, husband and wife deal. Uh, she went on Facebook, did a GoFundMe page, raised like six grand. In a matter of a few weeks. Well, that, that, that alerted everybody, there was, I was getting phone calls, uh. What's going on with this, Craig, and jeez, I'd like to be a part of it. And well, let's talk to the other members, and let's see if. If they wanna stay on, or they don't wanna stay on, and, and they all said, well, if you got somebody else that's willing to do it, then I'll stop aside. You know? And then back then, you just. You just didn't come to commission with all this stuff, you know? Like most things, it just ran independently. Well, the nature park, I mean, I think the nature park was up there operating ten, fifteen years before the commission even knew they owned it. They thought the Ten Lakes Sportsman's. You know, they were raising their own money, selling raffle tickets and everything else, keep it going and. You know? Everybody was surprised. And of course, then there was all kinds of stories, we owned the sectional land up there, well, at one time we did, but it had got whittled down through the. The qualification of E and R and everything else. So. Just, uh. Few things, so yeah, I think a, a resolution to clear there now really help.
Okay, thank you, anything else, Commissioners? Item, L A T C F grant.
This is the grant I was mentioning, uh, last week at my report, I draw your attention to item number two at the bottom of the first page. Just three items in there, this is where this grant talks about how the funds can be used. And, uh, simple statement, the award funds may be used to cover any costs incurred on or after March fifteen, twenty twenty-one, for any governmental purpose other than lobbying. And then paragraph B talks about what means, what lobbying means, we don't do most of that anyway. And then, uh. Finally, I, I see the recipient must expend, uh. An account for funds in accordance with the financial management procurement. Et cetera policies of the county. Word. This is about as good a grant as they come, it's in terms of what we can do. This is part of that whole ARPA program. We are eligible for fifty thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty-two and fifty thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty-three. Funds would be received in total by March of twenty-three, so in this fiscal year, we'll receive literally both of the allocations. Uh, all I'll need to do is put together a resolution so that you can vote to accept it, we're ready to go.
Questions?
Great.
Commissioner Scott?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Looks pretty good, I mean, yeah, rules are just. Rules are fantastic.
For, for government grants?
Yeah, yeah. So. Where does this originate from? Department of Treasury.
It's exactly the same pathway that the ARPA grant took, in fact, when I clicked on this, it automatically populated all of the forms with everything we had already submitted, which was really nice.
Better yet. User-friendly on top of all.
So it looks like it goes along with revenue sharing? Or it's eligible for revenue sharing county governments?
They're, they're calling it that, um, as they were just struggling for a name.
In Michigan, isn't that every county?
This is, it's every county.
I see it's federal, but, so maybe other states don't have revenue sharing counties or something. Aren't talking about. I wonder if we gotta. Put a questionnaire about how to spend it.
Are we good, Commissioner Scott?
Yeah, yeah.
Perfect. Uh, next we have item forty, driver authorization policy.
This is a follow-up on the review from travelers, they recommended that we establish a policy like this. Uh, just, uh, again, help, uh. Protect the county, if you will. What this policy in a nutshell says is that if you're gonna operate a vehicle for the county, whether you're an employee or a volunteer. You have to meet certain criteria, and certain drivers are not gonna. You have to meet certain criteria and certain drivers are not going to qualify. So there's a handy chart. Top of page two that. I think in a nutshell really sums it up. If you have no accidents and you've had no moving violations, you're going to be an acceptable driver. And I suspect most of our drivers are going to fall into that category, but as you can see with the number of accidents or the number of moving violations. Uh, you may become either a borderline or an unacceptable driver. And the unacceptables are pretty easy. If you have three accidents and you've had three moving violations, you're not going to be allowed to drive for the county. Uh, but we have some borderline cases, um, you know, one moving violation and two accidents, you're borderline. That will lead to the county to determine if this is somebody we're going to allow to drive for the county. And what this policy does is uh puts that determination. On the department heads and myself to decide whether or not we're going to allow in a certain individual to drive. And these are moving violations and accidents that aren't just county related, but overall on your driving record. And it would require at least an annual check of every driver to make sure that they still qualify. Um, it's, you know, a decent system. I think generally we know if one of our employees has been in an accident or they've gotten a ticket, you know, we we generally know. But this will formalize uh whether or not we're going to allow that individual to drive for us. Uh, again, this is whether they're driving for us in their vehicle or driving for us in one of our vehicles. If they're driving for us, they're under our umbrella for insurance. This this will apply both cases.
And this is for all drivers of all free.
So all all employees and all volunteers driving for the county. So if we have a volunteer that's driving their own vehicle uh to transport. I don't know.
Juvenile.
Juvenile, whatever that might be, that person will have to qualify on this chart.
And uh, this is something we can administer without uh having to talk to the unions about it?
We can, uh, because your union contract is not guaranteed that you're able to drive for the county. That's not something we've ever bargained. So this would be a. Policy that you're adopting for your property, if you will. Uh, but there's no contract that says these people are qualified automatically to drive. I will put it in front of the unions and you won't talk to everybody, won't need to know about it. So we'll have to.
Okay, one or. Three, uh, A three, first page, A three. Using a most recent five year experience. So this is not lifetime. This is a rolling five year prior, right, okay. So are we uh? Are we requiring notice if they're involved in an accident outside of here? Other, especially if they're involved with county equipped. Where was it?
Seventy two hours.
B two.
Okay.
Uh, B one gets in there too. Each employee and volunteer driver should annually complete the authorization form. But yeah, in B one, there's the seventy two hour requirement.
All right, okay, I missed that. Okay, this this is the same that waste management. I mean. You got in an accident, a personal car, you had to, you had those supervision. Absolutely, there's D O D, I mean, you know.
Questions? Sure.
Um, and then crashes, that at fault crashes, does that include card here?
No, preventable, preventable.
Preventable accident.
Says for the purposes of this policy, preventable accident shall mean avoidable collision in which the driver failed to do everything. That he or she reasonably could have done to avoid it. So it's basically an at fault accident.
It's right under that table that he just.
And I'll be honest with you, I think that this. Pretty doggone lenient.
That's what I thought.
In five years, if you get. Three at fault accidents and one moving violation, that makes it unacceptable, but you know what? If you can have three at fault accidents in five years and just be borderline. So I think it's being pretty.
It is.
Pretty lenient, you know, like it's giving everybody the benefit of the doubt.
Yeah, I should definitely get a copy of this. It is pretty lenient, I think. I agree.
Well, it's if you want to toughen it up, you can do that.
Can we get their input on it?
Yeah.
I mean, I think that they should have an input on this. I didn't realize that this was negotiable. I guess I thought the the insurance company. What this is what they want.
They want us to have a policy.
We don't want to make it any looser, but we can make it tighter.
Do you need the requirement of the insurance company to have all of these say acceptable? They just want us to have a policy so they know, but of course that will probably impact our rates.
Yeah.
Just so you know.
Yeah, take a look at this and see what you guys, you guys' thoughts. I mean, it is pretty lenient.
You say, you know, between the sheriff's office and transit, they've got the most drivers, so maybe.
I never thought of.
Maybe we should get together with Ray and the sheriff and see what your guys' thoughts are on this chart. Like I said, I think it's pretty lenient, but you know.
I never thought of the transit.
Five years.
Okay.
But we can. Next count for final one.
Yes, please. Item four E Mesa Insurance Plans Selection.
So the color chart that is in front of you.
I didn't see anything on that. Did I miss it? I'm right.
No, it wasn't on the iPad. We just had the meeting with the healthcare coalition on Tuesday.
I was just looking, I didn't know any of this was there, okay.
The. Agreements that we have with our uh unions who are on the mesa say that we'll meet as the healthcare coalition and consider whatever plan adjustments. That we might want to recommend uh moving forward. The. Mesa uh. Formula said that we could add one. Option uh for this coming year. So we had two options already. We had the Mesa Choices Plan and we had the A B C Plan, which is where the. Our savings accounts came into play. And so they said, well, after looking at the number of people that are enrolled, you qualify for another one. So we went into the meeting Tuesday, knowing that we would be able to select. I say our third plan to offer. But while the Mesa rep was there, she was actually communicating with the management of Mesa. And they said, well, we'll give you two more plans than just the one. So what you have in front of you is uh after going through. And this is just a great graph. You're considering all of these plans that Mesa offers and narrowing it down. Um, you've got the two colors, you've got the green and the orange. The columns on the left side of each one of those, so the A B C R X. Uh, on on choices and the A B C R X on the plan two are the plans that we currently have. And and you can see what the rates are and how they uh compare to the hard caps. The two plans that uh were were selected, the three tier mail prescription plans uh mirror. The benefit for the health insurance component, but the difference is on a ninety day prescription under the three tier selection. That's a mail order only option. I don't understand how they price health insurance and how prescription drugs are priced. But because you go to the three tier in with the mail order system, that drops your rates. And when your rates are evaluated for adjustments in the following years, it affects it very positively because you're not spending as much on the prescription. I don't understand the dynamics of how it works, but you can see here there's significant savings on both sides of that. The other thing it did for the Choices Plan, and this is the one that is the non H S A plan. So you can see it knocked out the uh family contribution. So person wanting the. The family or taking the family on the Choices Plan would be nicked for twenty five thirty a month, three hundred thirty dollars a year. If they decide to go with the three tier plan, it drops it enough where they're under the hard cap. So there would be no payment that the employee would have to make. Likewise, on the uh A B C Plan Two. Uh, you can see what the the original did, which was already pretty decent pricing, but when we add the three tier. Uh, even more savings in there. And that's, as I said, when they go to evaluate our rates for twenty twenty four and beyond. If we had all of our employees on that, that's going to positively impact the rate moving forward as well. So a double plus on that. The board technically doesn't have to do anything. The resolution that you passed last year to go to Mesa says we're going to Mesa and you've already passed the P A one fifty two resolution. These are the plans that the employee group said after consulting with their members. That would be most um appropriate or most acceptable to them. So you don't have to pass any resolutions or do anything when we do open enrollment. These are the choices that the employees will have in front of them. You can pass a resolution, there would be nothing wrong with that, but you've been effectively already done your work. It was then up to that group to figure out, oh, are we gonna, or what are we gonna offer? Open enrollment will start uh mid-November and will be handled through Mesa. Employees will be given an email. They'll click on the link and they'll select their, the plan that they want. And go read to Mesa. We don't have any intermediary. It goes right to Mesa, it goes right into their system and the magic happens January one.
Questions? Hey, uh, item F, Resolution of Recognition.
So I have two of them in front of you. Obviously, you're not acting on these tonight, but um. Uh, one of them we had already talked about, Mike Bowers was named the twenty twenty two Michigan Emergency Management Association. Local Management Coordinator of the Year. Uh, this resolution, if you agree to put it on, would recognize that and uh. You know, state your um. Yeah, that you're you're proud to receive that. The second resolution, we have an employee retiring October twenty fifth. That for several years has held the title of longest serving active employee of Ogumaw County. She's retiring after more than thirty seven years.
Wow.
And this resolution would acknowledge uh her contributions to the county over that time.
Absolutely. Do you know if there's um. Uh, Karen, is that a resolution you'd like to read at the meeting when we do do this resolution? Is there somebody that?
I would love to, but it's kind of an emotional situation for our office because of the terms in which she's retiring under. So I don't know if I could get through it without crying.
Okay. Can we think of? Anybody that would like to that you.
Oh, well.
Would like to, okay. And then Mr. Bowers, is there anybody? Something mine? I I like these right out loud, obviously.
I'll read, I'll read either one. It doesn't matter.
Well, I was thinking somebody with with some meaning behind. I mean, personal, let me embrace my.
Well, she's got the same last name.
Something personal. Okay, back to that. N M G Sheriff's Office Building.
Um, actually, I think that's a report out of the law committee.
Commissioner Becker, would you like to have the floor?
Um, with the high beams?
No. Sheriff's Office Building.
But if you are.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong one. Okay, uh, yeah, we, we had a pretty good discussion. Um, still gotta try to work out some uh finance uh possibilities. Um, we're looking at a USDA grant.
Don't don't work.
So we're.
We kind of nixed the annex.
Yeah, we we kind of, as a group, felt like uh it would be a waste of resources and uh. And money to put money into that that building just for that. That reason. Um, and that uh long term, it was, it was a better decision to go across the street. And um not hook it to the corrections office, but have a sheriff's office over there.
Okay.
Um, this cannot be paid for with, there will not be enough ARPA money to pay for.
No.
You're you're talking about borrowing money. For a long term.
Were you done? Were you gonna, were you done with what you were explaining?
Um. There 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 was some good things that came out of the meeting. Uh, looks like the USDA could possibly be pretty long term. And um if we talk to nine one one, who possibly could be very interested in going to that building too. Um, we could draw from some different pools of money to uh. To get in there, to get that um project started. But it's going to have to have support from the next board as well. It's not going to happen overnight. Um, I think what short or the the quickest we could probably be over there is what, two years?
I think two years, you would be on, you know, an aggressive schedule if you got to groundbreaking in two years.
Okay.
Um, you know, you'd be very well looking at a, you know, timeframe from two to four years before you're actually in a facility. And that's assuming everything works in our favor at every step. We talked about potential funding sources and Brett had mentioned the USDA, they offer programs that go out forty years. Well, that stretches, you know, your your payment, it makes it a little bit more reasonable. I told the group at that meeting, there is no room right now in the county budget to be taking on any other payment. However, we do know there are opportunities out there right now that are sort of one time. As all this ARPA money is still circulating uh through about twenty four, they have to commit those dollars. And so we would be chasing those dollars aggressively, patching as much as we can together to put this um uh to pay for the plan. Now, we're in the chicken and egg situation. What plan are we talking about? We can't really estimate the cost until we know what the plan is. So the next steps will be to start down that path. How do we get a plan? And somebody who can cost it out for us, so we have a reasonable idea of what we're shooting for for the other dollars. In the meantime, we could be talking to groups like USDA and getting them primed, figuring out what processes we have to follow uh to qualify for those dollars.
What was the other one that he talked about besides USDA, you know, the acronym, the.
Yeah, M E B C.
There you go.
Which recently received a lot of funding in the state budget. And they're looking at public projects like this. And again, this is why we need to strike now uh to secure some of those dollars.
And there he was talking like fifty percent of the total cost, if I'm not mistaken, that they would.
Right.
Possibly fund via the grant. And then if you get a USDA loan on top of that over forty years, you know, three percent or whatever, you know, probably. Could be an affordable project.
Now, that it is a roll of the dice in that we could get seventeen to twenty four months down the road and not have anything to show for it, you know, dollar wise. And then.
And in that amount of time, we're going to have to expend those ARPA funds.
Yeah, I.
We got a deadline on spending the ARPA funds. You can't just sit there and wait.
Right.
And then all of a sudden, some other plan won't work and oh, well, now we got ARPA funds. No, we're going to have to expend them. They got a time limit.
That's true, um, but there could be, it could be spent on something else and then you could use that line item money. Or something like this. And just just moving, moving those uh.
I'm not in favor of hiding a payment in inappropriate.
Not hiding, it's just timing.
Well, they, other commissioners, it it past commissioners hid the the jail. Payment in appropriations and nobody seems to account for it. It's in appropriation since we got another.
Commissioner, I'll tell you, will not happen on my watch.
I'm glad to hear that because it won't happen on mine. I would not go for a long term unfunded. Payment, I won't do it.
When I was looking at the USDA website, there was a lot of different grants in there for opioids, um, safety.
How many are we looking for right now?
And it was, and there were, there were um grants that could be used for um buildings. This will be, it looked pretty promising. I don't know if we'll apply or we'll, if we apply, it will, but. Definitely something we want to look at.
Yeah, that's, I mean, we'd be very aggressive, you know, in the short term, identifying those, getting our foot in the door, find out what we have to have in order to qualify. And secure as much as we can. Uh, I think between sheriff and the under sheriff, Chris Vetter on the line here, who's also worked with the USDA already. Uh, and has been pretty aggressive and pretty successful in getting some of those dollars. Um, I think team, this four of us will be able to. Make some headway there and uh.
In ten or twenty thousand is a lot different than getting millions.
Understood. That's why we want to pursue a grant like the M E B C grant that we were told about, that if it pays for half of it, that's potentially. Maybe a couple of million, depending on what it is that we're trying to build.
And he was willing to take and facilitate. His contacts within those two organizations to sit down and meet with us, you know, so I mean, he's.
Very nice gentleman, very intelligent man. Um, he could definitely help.
He's got skin in the game.
When you say who, he, who are you talking about?
Contractor.
Pardon me?
That's his name, right?
He's a contractor.
Yeah.
He um, his company has built what, at least two state police posts.
Three.
Three of them and several.
Brighton, Alpena, West Branch.
Yeah, you're going to make money, you're going to be aggressive.
Is the one you were talking about before originally? So you guys are having.
Well, he he actually um offered his uh his advising uh ability, even if he was. Well, he, he actually um offered his uh, his advising uh ability, even if he wasn't involved in the project.
So he's more than willing to, to help us out and at, at this point, at no cost, so.
Have had conversations with him?
He was at the meeting.
Oh, okay.
He came down and he was at the meeting, we were, he was there for about an hour.
Oh, good.
So, yep, because we initially were talking about, you know, design, build, lease option, and then we. That went out the window in a heartbeat, when we start talking costs, of course, and then um. Because right now, he figured it today is cost of what, two hundred and thirty-five dollars a square foot?
Yeah.
Um, we had plans from the state police post, the new post. Um, Brian Stein was there, Brian brought the plans out and stuff, so Brian was a part of the conversation, Sheriff, the UnderSheriff. Um, Tim was there, Brad and myself. Hmm, real good conversation, he seems more than, you know, happy to take and help us out, and he's. He's been in the business since twenty-five years, he's built not only state police posts, he's got four major uh people that he. Has contracts with the state of Michigan, um, the health thing, Tim, and I don't remember the other two. But I mean, he's, he's built DTHS buildings, he's built hospitals, clinics, um. But he's, you know, I mean, he, he, he flat out told us, he says, you know, the state police post is a twenty-year lease, he'll have his money back in ten years. But he provides every, he provides everything under a lease, he provides everything in that building, which I wasn't really aware of. From replacing light bulbs, the cleaning crew, lawn maintenance, snow removal, the state has no problem whatsoever, you know. So.
So there'll be more to come on this?
But that's the way, yes.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, thank you guys, thanks for the update, item H, employee training.
Well, hang on, hang on, I, since you're gonna be here after January, I'd like to hear your take on what you've heard.
I don't think that, I don't think there's enough information um to have an opinion yet.
No.
They're just, no, they're just gathering information right now, it's just, we're not saying yes, we're not saying no, but until we can.
I'm not asking you to say yes or no, I just wanna get.
What's, what are your, what is your question exactly?
Your take on what you've heard so far.
I'd like more information.
That's it, huh?
Mm-hmm.
Well, thanks for the commitment, all right, go on, move on to the next thing.
Commit what, what, what is that?
I just, I, yeah, I would think you'd have some kind of thought about it.
There's not a plan in place, there's not a price in place, there's nothing in place right now.
Okay, fine, fine.
Would you like to express your opinion?
Yeah, I, I think I already have, I, I'm not in favor of, of, of approving anything without funding.
Agreed.
And um, I don't, and I, I, I think that we have an opportunity right now with the ARPA funds to, to go a step better. And I think I'd, I'd like to go with the sure bet.
Which is?
What's a sure bet?
What's your sure?
ARPA money.
The annex buildings.
Annex, with the ARPA money.
And you have a plan and you know exactly how much that's gonna cost to go into that building?
No, but I'd like to take those steps, but you're, you're going past that, you're not even gonna look at it.
We talked about it.
You talked about it, but you, you've already blown past it, okay, you've blown past, right past, you're not even gonna even consider it.
But there was a reasoning why they didn't consider it with the consul, with, with cons- consulting. The UnderSheriff, the Sheriff, you guys, the Building Inspector, you guys took a trip over there, correct?
In the current state.
I'm asking because I don't know.
In the current state of that building, all right, we, we could still have tenants in there. Um, if nine-one-one wasn't in there, it would increase our amount of tenants we could put in there. Um, if we put the um Sheriff's Department in that building, now we gotta find a place for the people that are gonna be displaced from that building. Um, which is gonna create another problem. Um, not to mention, who knows, once a, an engineer gets in there and looks at that building, what it's gonna take to, to revamp it for a sheriff's office. I think it's gonna end up just like across the street, it's gonna be a lot more money than what we anticipated. So, I mean, I, I, I'd like to hear um from the Sheriff too, because as, as a group, we decided that that was probably not the right move.
That, that was what I.
And we're still in a fact-finding mission at this point, we haven't decided that that's exactly what we're gonna do. We're trying to see if, could we get the grants, could we be able to finance it? Can, can we, can we, can we make this a feasible option?
We're just, yeah, that's exactly what we're doing, is trying to, you know. Have at least a couple of options, not focusing specifically on one. But overall, right now, after the discussions and being over in the annex and all that, and. I think the, the best option for us to look at right now is this brand-new building on the footprint. Where the jail is, again, not attached to the jail, but adjacent to it, um, and I'll be honest with you. I have a concern that. If Sheriff's Office gets over there, they're gonna be stuck there for the next fifty years, just like they were stuck in that building.
Mm-hmm.
And that building's gonna go to crap, just like this one did, because it's, it's already thirty years old plus probably.
Well, there's a, there's already concerns over there of uh, of safety, just for. And I don't wanna get too, too into this, but um, there, there are definitely things over there in that building that I don't like. About nine-one-one being there, let alone have to um revamp it for the Sheriff's Office. Um, I think that if we're gonna put county money into a project like this, it needs to be for a building that's gonna last. Sixty-plus years, you know, we're, right now, they're, we're working out of a building that had a, it was a family home when it was first built.
Right, and then, when that jail was first built, the sheriff and his family lived there, and where their offices are now. Those were the, two of the bedrooms where the little conference room is. If you've been over there, right, Jen?
Yes.
Okay, you know where that little conference room is when you first walk, when you start down the hallway and it's on the right-hand side?
Okay.
That was the master bedroom, it's got an attached bath. The UnderSheriff's Office was the bedroom, the Sheriff's Office was the bedroom.
Okay.
Wow. Yeah, go in there and um, and have a meeting, you will hear your own voice echo.
Mm-hmm.
And, and, I, I, I'd like to see what the heating bill is for that, for that office, I mean, it can be good. So.
Imagine when we heated the whole place.
Now, my question is, was that a, a committee group decision that the annex building was not a, a feasible idea?
Idea, I don't, I don't think we said it's not feasible, I don't think it's cost-effective, yes.
Was that a?
But it's an option we can look into, obviously, further, you know, that we can go into and, you know, we'd have to have somebody go over there and say, again, you know. Get with the sheriff and go play an idea and you will walk through with it and say, okay, what's it gonna take, number one, to. Configure it this way, and number two, to bring certain areas, I can't say up to code, but up to. What's needed as far as security goes, um.
And your ability to get grants for a new construction like that will probably be more likely than to try to.
I don't think they can give grants for renovation, I, I don't know.
Yeah, I wasn't in favor of, of the annex building initially, so I.
Well, you do have an opinion on this.
I still stand on that, I still stand on it as it is, Sheriff, did you?
So that's what I should ask you for.
Sheriff, did you have something that you wanted to?
Well, I, I remain, you know, open, open-minded, you guys are the money people, so um. You know, if that was, if that was converted for our needs, and not just us stuck over there for what it is right now. It, it could work, um, but I don't have to say so, as it stands, so I, I remain open.
You're part of that committee, so I'm gonna disagree, you, you're on the law enforcement committee, correct?
Yeah, and I have, I have a neutral feeling on it, I would be, it, it'd be awesome to have a brand-new building for us.
Correct, you have a voice, you're on the committee, and they're bringing the general consensus back to us.
Let me talk and then I'll, I'll.
Go ahead.
Um, I'm okay with a new building over there, because it, it'd be building for the future, we build them for the next year, the sheriffs beyond. That I don't know how long it's gonna last, but that would work if it was, if it was modified to, for our needs, it would work, how long would it work? I have no idea how it'd work, but that annex building is far better than where we're in now, I will, I will say. So, that's up to you folks, which, what, what uh, what path you wanna go down.
So you guys will collect more information and bring it back to us?
Yes.
Perfect. Item H, employee training, the Carnegie course, I believe this is you, Commissioner Scott?
Yeah, I don't have any information on it.
Uh, did, do you want it put on the agenda?
Yeah, I'd like, yeah, did you, do any research? We did, um, back at the first part of the year, we contacted the Carnegie people and. Mary, I don't know if you remember the number, I'm gonna say a number, but I'm not sure I'm right.
I was.
It was north of ten thousand, it was closer to twenty.
I think twelve hundred per person, and that was the government discount, it was not.
I think that sounds right, twelve hundred.
No, that was, that was here.
I think it sounds right.
Yeah.
And we had even, and that was having someone come here even, so we wouldn't have to pay mileage on that, like that was just.
It'd be locally, it'd be locally, could be locally done.
It can be locally done, but it's still called hundred per person. And then there was some other, I, I pulled the email and then helped.
I went to a hotel, one of the hotels down in, on Ted Watsley Road in Saginaw, and took the course, you know, in, in a conference room. And, and uh, you know, I, that's why I say I think could be done locally, you know. I think that if, if uh some of these uh companies around here knew that there was a course locally, they did. They'd wanna send people. I can tell you, I can tell you, Waste Management sent all its, all its supervisors there, and when I was down at Saginaw, yo and yo. Accounting firm, uh, they're pretty well-known in mid-Michigan, they send all their, all their accountants to it. Um, many companies were there, Duralast Roofing, which along with, Duralast is what, Tip Top Screw in Oskota? Is a uh, branch of their company, they send all their management people. So, Watsaw here, Sandvik, I, I wouldn't doubt it. Or even, even in their surrounding area, Gladwin, Standee, stuff like that, if they knew that there was a class here, that. There'd be maybe some shared cost, sure.
It's, it's, they wouldn't get the government discount.
They may not, they may not, more participation.
Per finished bottom line.
Okay, but if it, it was a good number off the bat, then you would, um, I would think that in the future, they would hesitate. They would not hesitate to come this way with another one.
For twelve hundred bucks a person?
True, you're talking about an intensive, an intense course. This isn't just a one-time shot, they don't come in one day.
Do you have any materials still from?
Gee whiz, I don't know where.
Trying to save twelve hundred bucks a person.
Well, you know, I mean, we're dreaming up millions of dollars to build a building, I, I don't think it's too hard to find ten thousand someplace.
What, I guess, what would be the end goal of this? Um.
I think it helps.
This training.
I think it helps not only uh, uh, communication with uh subordinates or, or peers. But time management, they, they talked a lot about time management. I, I think it just helps anybody at a super, the supervision or managerial level.
Is there an area specific that, that?
They have wide range courses.
Okay, I, I don't disagree with this, if there's a need for it, if we're struggling in a certain area right now, if somebody has came to you and, and requested this, is, is this?
I brought it up in previous.
You did.
Commissions before, it's just that I, I, I've had it, I've seen what it does. How it can transform some people, um. We, we have a lot of people in managerial roles, and I'm not even saying it's just gotta be that, but um. At the, at the workforce that I've seen, we've, we've flipped the workforce here in the county building. I mean, the lot of, the, the, a lot of the higher seniority people when I came on, just six years ago, are gone now. I mean, my gosh, I mean, it's all brand-new people in the, all brand-new people in the, in, in both clerk's office. Since I came here and the treasurer's office, I mean, everybody is flipped. I mean, um, I, I, I think, I think this is very beneficial.
Is this something you could bring up at the next department head um meeting and, and get their thoughts on it?
Sure, uh, we, we've done that once, but I'll bring back that we didn't have pricing when we met with departments last time, so I'll definitely bring that as well.
But they have a menu of the different courses, it's not just one set course.
They do, and if I recall, they sent us some links to some of that, so I'll be able to share that with the group too, as we talk it through and.
Maybe just do a, a two or three uh, uh. Day or night or period on just time management.
Great, I think their input, I think their input as far as what the needs would be, it, you know, should be considered.
Okay.
Are you okay with that?
The, uh, Mary waving at you.
Please.
They, um, they do have free eBooks, broken down, available on the website.
Which is what, what's eBooks?
Like, it's bro, they're, they're basically a book that you can download and read and.
It's free?
Mm-hmm.
Wow, okay. What's that website?
I will email to you.
That would be.
And, and Dale Carnegie is only one um suggestion, you know, there's other, there's other courses out there of all different types. But I think it's giving the tools to the, to the people that are, that are working here. I know in my experience, you, you know, it was giving the tools out to the, to the supervision to get. We need to get more work out of the rank and file, and you just need to communicate better, you know. What's the number one problem in managing people? Communication. That, that's always said, it's communication, how do we communicate, how to communicate is. Managerial to subordinate, how do we, you know.
When's your next department head meeting?
In November.
Seven.
November.
I know when I came on board, the treasurer's office was, uh, gave, uh. Sent, sent a couple of their employees to Excel school, to learn Excel programs better. Um, I've seen reports, in the six years I've been here, I've seen the reports come back, they're not done on spreadsheets, they're done on Word. When you look at a column of letters, or a column of numbers, and they go like this down there, they're not using Excel, they're using Word. You know, or they're in typing, if they, they're probably a typewriter or something, I don't know.
I have one.
Their office, yeah.
Every day.
But I'm saying, you know, I mean, if you want, if you're, if you wanna get a point across and. And your spreadsheet's doing this, it's like, it's a distraction when you're looking at it, and I'm looking at it going, jeez. How much time did it put into this report?
Go ahead, start grant writing and see how your numbers come out there, what they, what the grant readers are gonna think about that.
So we're, well, that's why we have Mary.
We're gonna, we're gonna put that on the floor, Tim, there'll be more to come on that.
Right.
Okay.
We'll go to department heads with it and we'll.
See what their, see what their needs are. Uh, item I, Merz-defined contribution plan.
The Merz rep was here this week, actually, um, the question was raised. Would uh, with the defined contribution of four fifty-seven plans, we match up to seven percent? Question was posed is if an employee wanted to put in more than seven percent, but the county is still capped at seven, is that something the board would be interested in allowing? Board would have to say yes first before Merz would change the plan, so that's the conversation I wanted to have here. So let's say employee A comes in, wants to take advantage of the seven percent, but they wanna put ten percent in. Out of their own, so the additional three percent completely on their own, not matched by the county. Is this something that the board would, um, you know, agree to do? And uh, if you were interested, then I would get with Merz, and we would draft the policy, uh, or draft the resolution that you'd have to pass. And send to Merz to allow it to happen.
Why would we not?
Um.
There's not a doubt, I can tell you, I mean, say.
I think I'm already there, um, Karen, do you recollect? Because you would have been the one to put it in when, when I made my elections on it.
Your election is higher than.
I think I'm at fifteen percent.
You might be in a different category as an elected official, though, where you could do that.
I was gonna say, I know, I know, when I filled my stuff, I put in the wrong figure, Tracy goes, do you really wanna put this much in? I said, what did I put down? I said, what did I put down? She goes, well, county matches seven. She goes, and you are substantially higher than that. She goes, you can, she goes, you can put a hundred percent of it in if you want to. You know?
Well, I thought there was a.
So maybe as elected officials, we are different than.
Maybe. Well, I would, she posed the question to me.
I would.
And Merz told her the employees can't do that right now.
I would, it's, I wouldn't put a cap on it at all. I mean, God, if an employee wants, good for them, if they wanna put more than what the match is, hallelujah.
I, I don't think you can put a hundred percent. I.
IRS cap.
But the IRS caps it, and then, but then there's an age thing where you can play catch up.
And maybe that's why, that's why Tracy told me.
I think up to twenty-five percent, you can, above fifty-five years old, I think you can because of try to catch up, because it wasn't there when I was twenty-five, you know, um.
I say do the resolution.
With what? Do you wanna?
What's the mag? I just.
So, probably whatever the IRS.
So just define it as the cap.
Yeah.
Or we'd be very general in the wording of the resolution, uh, to the maximum allowed.
There you go.
Or something along those lines, and Merz, then, you know, they get.
There would be no downfall to this.
Certainly not to the county.
No.
Uh, and it, uh, would be very attractive to employees.
Absolutely.
So, again.
We couldn't put whatever, there's no cap on ours. I'm sure there is a cap, but I mean.
Right, yeah. Go to IRS.
Yes.
Here's my case up right here, I'm putting twenty percent in.
I know you're a special category too, because you're not a full-time employee, so I'm sure lots of actors like that are.
We're old enough, we're not employees.
Okay, if I can, uh, get a definitive answer from Merz to the exact language that they want, I will put it on for Thursday.
Okay. You guys good with that?
God, yes.
Okay, high banks update.
I've heard nothing.
Credit, you know, the bottom line, I, I think there's only, Karen, help me out again. I mean, there's a very small percentage that does all seven percent. Very few.
We're on high banks, aren't we?
Done single digits.
Yeah, he's talking number steps.
Sorry, I'm just running a little different pace.
I asked if anybody else had anything else, and everybody said no, so I said next we have high bank.
Say no, I guess, what's up, no?
I, I learned, I heard nothing.
So what's our next step here? What do you guys wanna do about this?
For the per sales.
Or again, like I, I offered before, I got the names of a couple of nature conservancies, if that's something that the board would be interested in, it would remain, you know, a nature preserve, so to speak, it wouldn't be developed. Um. You know, I could reach out to a couple of them and see if there's even any interest. I don't, I don't know if it'd be an interest. There's, there's like three of them up on Point Blank Island, where I've got property up there and, um, they have different parcels on the island and stuff, so I could, I'd be more than happy to look into it if you guys want me to go down that road, or if you wanna hang it for sale, so I know, I'm good with that too, so.
Tough one. Commissioner Scott.
Well, if he's got, you know, I, you know, I wouldn't mind it being nature, but I don't wanna stolen and maintain it. If, if there's some nature conservatory or some nature group or like a five oh one or something like that, and they wanna assume it and and not develop it, as long as we've grown restriction, that they couldn't just turn around and sell it later, you know, um. I'd be all in favor of that. It's not that I wanna make money off of, it's just I don't wanna take care of it.
Right.
And I'd just not soon not put a close sign on it.
Right.
I said, I don't know how the structures of these nature conservancies work. I, you know, I only see their signs and the properties that they have and the restrictions, and they got a little set of rules and regulations. If you go on the property, you know, there's no motorized vehicles. You know, you can't hunt on it, you know, whether to get things on it, but I don't know. I don't know the first thing about them, other than the fact that I see their property and their signs on it.
Hopefully you can fish on it.
You can. You can't hunt.
And then making sure that the canoe, uh, uh, facilities can also continue to utilize it.
Again, like I said, I don't know, I don't know.
A service club.
Frankly, I don't know the first thing about how they're structured. But I've been willing to do the research and find out if that's what you wanted to do, if you.
Yeah, because we could, I mean, we could always offer a, you know, a deed restriction on it as well, when we sell it, that it has to remain, uh, available to the public or something.
Right, you know, if they don't want it anymore, then give it back to us, I guess, but, um, I don't care if it's a service club, Kiwanis, Optimus wanted, or, or anything like that, you know, just a, a nonprofit. Take it over, that's fine. I, I, I wouldn't have a problem if it'd be a long-term lease kind of thing, that, you know, for a dollar, you can lease it for the next fifty years. And you don't even have to own it, you know, it's still on, take care of it.
Mary, did you have something?
I did. When I went there to check out the property at the, um, down, went all the way down, and there was a mailbox that was hanging up there that said trash bags, and I took a picture of it. And basically the Monongahmin Heritage Chapter and the Rifle River Restoration Committee had put these
Yep.
trash bags there, and I'm wondering if maybe Mark would wanna reach out to them and see, um, if any of those, um, fishing restoration people that are taking care of, of the river itself would be interested in taking it.
Aren't you, didn't, didn't they reach out to you, were in request? We did a resolution for that.
But there was a lady that was in the Bay City area that, um, worked with us on this, to get the trash bags, and also Dave Ryan. Um, so we could, I could see if I could, um, find her contact information.
We passed a resolution on it, so there has to be some contact information on it.
Um, yeah, I'll dig it up.
Yeah, it was after I took office, because I remember passing it on to you. The lady's information, I mean.
I have a shadow of a memory of it, so.
Uh, yeah, it's been a very long time, but at least the last two years.
Most township asked at the meeting, why, why we just wanna continue it, and, and I was pretty adamant that the reason was, is because we're not maintaining it. Why, why continue to keep a property that, that we're not maintaining?
If they thought maybe that we, we wanted to get rid of it because of the insurance, but, uh, it's really not affecting us.
It doesn't affect our insurance rate.
No, so, um, it may to the personal advisor, but.
No, but we're a higher liability when it's not being taken care of.
Oh, absolutely.
So, and we're not taking care of it, so. Is that it on it? More to come. You'll keep putting that on, so we don't drop that.
Until we've done something.
Adam K, law enforcement GPS update.
For Tom.
Tom, are you on?
Yep, I'm here. I'm still gathering some information, testing the accuracy. It is installed on a patrol car laptop, and it appears to be working. Um, I'll have more information at the next committee of the whole. I didn't actually know this was on the agenda tonight, so I apologize, but I did provide an update last week.
Um, Tom, I went, I went over to nine one one, I was, uh, looking at what they got over there. Is, I, I guess I'm not understanding why we need to be testing this at this point when the state police in Iosco County are already on the system with Motorola.
Um, well, I haven't received any guidance from my Oscar as to what I actually need. And at, I don't know when you were over at nine one one, but for a period of time, the GPSs weren't working in nine one one. So.
Well, they were working just fine, uh, what was it, uh?
Wednesday? Eighteenth?
Tuesday.
They must, they were fixed, and at the last committee of the whole meeting, they weren't working that day. But, um, I looked at it, I went with Lieutenant Castman, and we looked at a duty log, and the addresses were slightly off. So, I'm not, I'm not saying it's gonna be completely accurate, but I'm not so sure about the settings and whatnot, before we start throwing this out there, and we wanna pinpoint things as to what's going on, that it's completely accurate.
So what's the next step? You're just gonna get more information for us?
Correct. I mean, I, I wanna make sure that this is gonna be right before we step forward with this. And like I said, I've received no guidance from my Oscar County. I've reached out to them a couple of times, and I informed you guys of that last week at the regular commissioners meeting, and, um, I just wanna make sure that we're on the right track before we, we start paying for this.
The state police are on this too, right? Aren't they, Brad?
Yeah, their, their ambulance service is on it, their, um, county, or county, uh, officers are on it. And so is the Michigan State Police, and I watched Michigan State Police cars moving around as they were driving, um.
And transit's got GPS of their own.
They have a separate, they have a separate system, which I talked to Ray, they go through their radios. But Brad, do you know the name of the GPS system that I, that state police are using?
Motor, Motorola.
Right, but that's the, that's a dispatch system, but do you know the GPS system that the state police in Iosco County are using?
Uh, no, they didn't, they didn't tell me that.
Ironic, neither do I.
All right, I'll reach out to her and, uh, find out.
Thanks.
You, you had given us a report at the meeting last Thursday, and you had installed that, and you said it was quite complex, correct?
It is, because there's an interface that the GPSs need to split with the laptops for the software that's running on the laptops. And it needs to transmit the GPS data. And there was some slight inaccuracy there when I looked with Lieutenant Castman at the duty log versus what was being logged.
Some more to come. You'll keep us updated. Mr. Newback, I'll touch base with you as well. Okay.
Perfect, thank you.
Uh, item five, public comment. Is there any public comment in the room? Sure. Any public comment on the phone? No public comment? Item six.
So moved. What's new, Jerry?
Support. You're gonna adjourn at six fifty.
I, I.